Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Green, four point two, the agenda and the motion.
So move.
Yes, Jason and Jessica.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Michaelina.
Hi.
I am four point three, working for the approval of a business consent.
So move.
Hold on. Doctor. Jason.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Michaelina.
Hi.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the personnel consent. The motion.
So move.
Mike?
Sorry.
And Mike.
Joe.
Okay, Mike and Mike, okay, okay.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Joe Michaelina.
Hi.
Finally, I need a motion to approve the CPSA CSE items.
So move.
Linda.
Doctor.
Jason.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike Goff.
Hi.
Joe Michaelina.
Hi.
Okay, I don't know whether we're getting board committee reports.
Actually, yeah, just to remind you to the board again, we have legislative reference this week. Actually, I apologize, February twenty-third at seven forty-five or so, all invited, if you do want to go, please let Marcy know and we'll get a spot for you at the table because we have all, most of the legislators are going to be there for the county. And we'd love to have you, and if you haven't yet, so if there are any questions, please forward them to me as soon as possible. And also a reminder on your calendar, we have our joint dinner, I believe that's March, let's see, I probably wrote it down. Point do you have?
March twenty-seventh, the snow day then March twenty-eighth.
Okay, March twenty-seventh.
And our guest speaker will be Mr. Paul Marcy.
Oh wow, that's awesome, it's great news, thank you, okay. Okay, but we'll continue to keep you abreast of what goes on, if you can't make it to the February twenty-third, I'll report out at our next board meeting, okay?
You have a first item on our president's report, and that is an item that will come up later in the agenda, but I would say that Linda Gretz is running for a seat on the BOCSIS board. It's a process where she sends a letter out to us as well as all the districts in the BOCSIS, and one of the things we're going to do tonight is hopefully animate Linda from Ougio, and hopefully she'll get the nod from the other districts as well. So her letter is included in this item, and this is the order that will go out of all the other districts, so good luck with that.
Thank you.
And with that, Craig, I guess.
Just a couple of things here, I want to recognize our middle school student council who did a great job tonight at Stoplight, Mr. Francisco and Mr. Daley, very well organized and some great presentations that they had to share tonight, so really, really, really fun to, no further updates really on budget at this point. It's still, you know, there's still a lot of games going on between, in the legislature which will happen for a while, so we should have a better idea, I think, coming into the beginning of next month, I would think, as to getting a little bit closer in that budget process. The Shrek show this weekend was incredible performance, I heard many great things about it, unfortunately I have a town this weekend, so I didn't see it, but I've heard unbelievable things about it, I know that our students really enjoyed, really enjoyed the show, and it was on Friday morning for some of our younger students. So that was always pretty exciting for them. And really, you know, other than that, I don't think it's looking very good for us no way at all. I've been stopped about twenty-five times today wondering where that's going to fall, and at this point it doesn't, doesn't look too great, so.
Every performance that I've seen over the last, oh, ten, fifteen years has been, each time I think they can't top it. And the amount of work that went into this performance this past weekend was, again, outstanding by everyone, and the kids were just amazing, and you didn't get to see it. The costumes, the music, the entertaining, the comedy, and of course the Shrek movie of the past, I remember seeing it with my girls way back, way back when, came out, and I laughed, it gave me so many different laughs, the kids were just so funny, and the talent, our singing was just right on the spot on it. So congratulations to the kids and the staff that put this, this production on, and the parents, and, and the people behind the stage, all, so much work went into that, that was very obvious to me, and I was right down on the front row, and I just, expressions of the kids, it was worth it all, it was great.
Dr. Christensen with Samco here tonight, and we're going to have an update from our last meeting where we talked about the potential of the capital projects. There's been some, some new workings of some numbers, and he's going to share that along with some other of the big items that really need to be addressed across the district. Okay, that's great, I'm not sure if it's on, I don't think it's on. Does that work? Maybe. Yeah, just talk nice and loud, we should be able to hear something. Anyway, thanks for having me back again, it's great to, great to be here, and as Dr. Green just said, I'm going to share, the last meeting, we, we showed you three different scenarios, one of which had a local impact, actually two had local impacts, and some local cash that goes into it, right now I'm going to show you a completely different version of that, I think it was pretty clear that not a lot of interest in going out to voters and asking for some type of tax, tax impact on the project. So we worked with Dr. Farrell, with Christine Crowley, fiscal advisors, had two or three different meetings, the last one Dr. Green was in as well. So I want to share some different scenarios with you, I think ones that you might like a little bit more, in showing you how to use some additional revenue that you've just recently approved in, in doing that. So as I also said, I did put some budget numbers to what we've identified as needs off from your building condition survey, and also off from just what we call contractor walks, CM walks, where when we have engineers and the architect out on site, we identify additional items that you, are within at least a three to five year window that need to be addressed, I'll talk a little bit about those, show you kind of an updated list by building with that, and then I'll share the revised financial options with you as well. So upcoming wise, this is a very similar slide, I did add a couple more things at AES, the auditorium was not, and the last project was not done. So that is to be a little bit more specific, and we're all the way down the weeds with you, but there's the mechanical system in there, and it's currently not air conditioned like the rest of the building is. You have some air, basically, what I call CFMs are bringing more outside air in, so that's on there. Your kitchen is definitely due at AES for an update, especially now with the movement to be even healthier, as you're feeding students more and more healthy food. So instead of prepping food, it's more of a cooking type situation. Cafeteria itself, a lot of that is a facelift within there, additional infrastructure, we left that as about four hundred fifty, five hundred thousand, it could go up a little bit, it could come down a little bit. That's your electrical needs, the, the system over there, your electrical, your power deliverance of that, to that building is right at near or near capacity. And so as you start to move into the future, and you start to look at more additional, whether it be electric, the electric buses continue or anything like that, it's the right opportunity to do that at the same time, some of that infrastructure. We also have some sewer lines that are well over fifty years old, or as old as the building, that are on the outside. We did everything inside, you might remember in the last project, but now we're to the outside part, so probably new sewer lines, and then a new water line. We put one in that comes into the main, into the front of the building, but it's probably also time there's a second line that comes in there. Some playgrounds, that's been talked about quite a bit, we've met several times over there about updating the playgrounds, the back area, the playfields, things like that are not. They're, they're just aging, some of the equipment is in very good shape, but the surrounding areas of it, whether it be, which is also accessibility challenges for students with disabilities being able to get out on, so you've seen these in other districts, you actually at OES, you have a system where it's like, I'll, I'll call it rubber, but it's not actually rubber anymore, where wheelchairs can roll out onto it, so having more accessibility of equipment. A canopy out front, that was omitted in the last project, we did do all the site work, but we did not put a canopy out front. And so that's some of the highlights of AES, there's some other cosmetic things in some, the library area, things like that that did not make the last project. Construction wise, it's right around five million, your incidental costs, as you take about twenty percent of that, could be a ballpark number, it's about a million dollars around that piece. Your capacity will reset to be able to do that in twenty twenty-five, so in June of twenty twenty-five, you'll, you'll get back all of your capacities for that building, which is about eleven and a half million in construction, and just under, I believe, three million in incidentals, so that's that piece. At OES, I didn't put any numbers next to that, your parking lot is starting to, as you start to hit ten years, eleven years, twelve years, it's, it's time to start looking at whether it's just milling and paving that, whether that's a maintenance item. Some of your mechanical systems, we talked about this last time, you're starting to approach that ten-year mark with the building, and that's where you start to see compressors starting to fail, that's where you start to see some of your, your systems, UV lighting, you know, UV lighting system over there, those have about a lifespan of about ten years, so we're starting to plan for that. They're not actually represented in the dollars and cents to this project, and, and part of that is still working with STD as far as what your aid limits are at, at OES. That building is partially paid for by FEMA, as you know, but it's also has some local money, so we'll have to figure out exactly what's called your BAUs, or your aid units, what exactly they will fund at that school. And the reality is they won't fund much until that building hits about fifteen years old, but it's not too early to at least start to plan for it, especially as you get into a capital project, you want to know what, what your five looks like, what your six is, whether that's holding back some local money or whether that's moving forward. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Some of your lighting, interior lighting is all very good, but some of your controls are a challenge there.
Is there just a, oh yes, does it have AC and that?
Yes, yes, yeah, that whole building is.
Is it backhand working?
At AES or OES?
At OES.
At OES, I believe that whole building does.
It is, okay.
Yeah, the whole building is. That's a lead gold building, and so part of the points, that's an energy efficient building, part of the points that they chased to get that certification was making sure that you had, just, you had UV on your mechanical systems, that's a big one, but the other one is they have air conditioning, so, yeah, it does. You remind me tomorrow, there's lots of way to remind me tomorrow, so you're not.
I like when you do that stuff.
Yeah, so over here at OFA, in the middle school, the roof is probably one of your higher dollar items, that, part of the roof was done, but the remainder of that roof is, is definitely in need of upgrade, you're starting, in some areas is well over thirty years old, it's time to start addressing that. And simultaneously, as I mentioned last time, you don't want to do the roof and then try to do the mechanically, you really need to think top-down, you know, just kind of common sense to that. So mechanical is another area over there that does not have air conditioning in many of the spaces, some spaces do, some spaces don't. You have some fresh air issues in some of the classroom areas, like not up to the newest codes, and so if you're going to, again, touch the roof, that's a good time to touch the mechanical. There are a handful of classrooms left that did not have renovations in the last project, that really do need to be done, ceilings are in kind of rough shape, floors need to be updated. We did all the safety, and you might remember your safety, your smart schools, so all your safety components are consistent, your lockdown procedures, your badge readers, all of that has been done, and that won't go to waste, it'll just be incorporated, but we did not do all of the renovations to the, to the actual classroom, so there's a number of them. You have some plumbing challenges, you, you have forced mains, okay, too technical here, that are approaching the end of their lifespan, and some of that just has to do with the fact that the, the building has more and more use, it doesn't have less use, schools are used more and more, and I think it's, at this point in time, we start digging things up, that's the right time to address some of that. And some interior fixtures, some of the older fixtures definitely need to be upgraded, so we put it, we're holding a number of about a million dollars, it's probably a little bit on the high side, but for the sake of a pre-referendum conversation, it's a good number, it's a safe number. The pool building itself, so we are going to, we're on track this summer to get into the pool, so the pool, the tile fixes, if you've been in the pool recently, you have some broken tiles, the diving boards will be upgraded, the three of them, the filtration systems, the air handler units, all of that will be addressed. But the building itself is starting to show its age, and what we're coming back to from the engineers and the architects is the insulation on the side walls, you might notice when you're in there, they're, they're wet, they're coming down, that's just the insulation starting to fail, and the building structure itself is okay, but the roof is also one of those buildings that, it's a metal building, the only time we have that the roof typically has to be re-insulated, things like that, so we're holding a larger number for that. Altogether, your career center is continuing to expand, so we, we kind of put a dollar amount on that to possibly be able to move in the, what I call the two-story area, you know, where the, where the stairs aren't in the middle, to be able to renovate some of that upstairs even more, and then also on the career center itself, be able to continue to expand that, that program. Those are getting very popular in schools, they'll tell you, you are well ahead of the game, matter of fact, I mentioned to try to send people to you to see it, quite often I was just in the neighborhood district, last two weeks ago, I guess it was now, and talking about career centers, we're doing a lot of talking to kids, which is great, but you actually have it up and running. So it's definitely one of the, definitely a landmark type of program for you, so it'll just continue to grow. Obviously, the push is more and more to the trades, to the fields, getting students definitely, college, college and career ready was our buzz, but the whole idea, and that is, I call it job ready, type of thing. So the auditorium, the lighting and the sound, your rigging, has definitely shown its age there, sound is, is always a challenge in there. We're holding just a place value number for that, it'll really depend on what the desire is as far as what you're looking to do, like you just had a production in there of Shrek, that can get very technical, and we start upgrading the LED lighting and type of, different types of boards, and I'm not going to pretend to know how all that stuff works, but basically it can start to get more, more expensive, but the time to do that is when you're renovating, you don't want to see a lot of wire chases down the walls and things put in after the fact. Parking lots, we did some milling and paving about five years ago now, four years ago, five years ago, we did a lot of milling and paving, but a lot of them now are approaching the twenty-year, twenty-plus year mark, so there is some of that, you'll notice some of your potholes, some of the other things that are in there. Your center parking lot, there's some, talk some different ideas for that, that can happen as well, maybe expanding parking over here by the pool area, so all different types of things that have been tossed out there. But the reality is the parking lots and the pavement, it's starting to get to that point. Been a good job maintaining them, pavement just is not the same pavement we saw, and we, we kind of joked last year when we were doing the tennis court, there's many cracks to the tennis court head and stuff like that, but as that started to come out, you just don't see that type of pavement anymore. Just, I don't want to say it's the quality, it's basically what's used, the by, the chemicals that are in it, things like that, yeah, twenty years ago was very, I think everything was different. I refrigerator, I think we all, you know, feel our pain with that. Concession building, that's been talked about for a while, having exterior bathrooms, some different ideas have been thrown out there, that's in, if, if that's actually its own building, I'm not really showing that as possibly aided, we could work with State End of Tribe, but I wanted to make sure I hold a place value in there, because that's a desire, when, when people are, are going to games and, and events on your field, and weekend events now that you're hosting more and more, of having an outside restroom, so people are not having to come all the way into the building to use those. And then I show a number of FFNE, so FFNE is just furniture fixtures and equipment, all of these things that we're talking about in here, typically what we, what we tend to spend is anywhere from five to ten percent on some of that equipment, sometimes we can get it aided, sometimes we can't, but that's all decisions that are made kind of throughout the process with it. So altogether about fifteen, roughly about fifteen million. There is additional items that are on your BCS that I didn't, really didn't warrant a bullet for the sake of talking about it here, but when you add them all up, it's probably an additional four to five hundred thousand. I didn't really want to get into all the, all the weeds with that, but to give you an example, like water fountains, we did most of them, we didn't do all of them, so things like that that would all get addressed. Some of your bathroom fixtures should be upgraded, that's kind of in our plumbing number there as well. So that's OFA in a nutshell, so if you were to add all of that up, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of low twenties to mid twenties in construction costs, you would put in additional, what I typically say is put additional ten percent, if we were showing an actual budget here tonight, we would show an additional ten percent on top for what we call general conditions and requirements, and then on top of that, you've got your incidental, so you're right in that neighborhood of about twenty-three to twenty-five million, would, would be a safer, and that, and that encompasses a good ninety to ninety-five percent of everything that's on your BCS, it addresses a lot of the concerns on the programming side at the same time. So that's a pretty good number to work with, so go ahead, Marcy. So the other item that was just, and I'll introduce this now, and certainly chime in with this, but you might, you might recall you just recently approved a lease with BOCSIS to run it, or to boost in CTE programs, additional CTE programs here. You have the ability as a public school, a lot of districts do, that you can lease part of a building, several classrooms, to BOCSIS, and then they bring it out of district students, and it's a BOCSIS program. It's the best of both worlds, the staff move to BOCSIS, in other words, you're driving aid off from them, they're paying for them, that's more important actually than the aid. And then additionally, your square footage that you have can also be used to, to reach outside students, it's highly desirable for BOCSIS to have something on, out in Tioga County. This has been talked about, the other night I was at the Shing and Forks Board meeting, they have a new battery lab that was just installed, but they don't have the space to really go bigger with that. It's really going to be limited to one or two classrooms, so we did start the program and help them through that, but you have some capability with your maintenance facility to possibly expand that footprint, to have additional CTE programs, and with that, they are talking about what their role would be. That was part of the conversation right from day one, is you can't expect the local school district to fund all of that and then hand it over to you. So you have a lease in place right now, and you'll see that number in a second, it's about three hundred and sixty thousand, you're driving annually on that, which is a significant number. And so what we did in these new financials is we took that revenue on that leased building, and we brought that into what that would look like as far as what a project would do. So how to leverage that money, so again, to have no local impact, and it also brings the, the dollar value up significantly, and so those are some of the things that we'll talk about here in a second. But the idea with a long-term lease is, is always a good plan, BOCSIS is consistently, they have a large project right now that they're getting ready to start, but it is going to be at their, what I call their Glenwood campus, it's not going to be out this way. So students who are interested in some of the programs, as you know, now they're commuting into BOCSIS, and, and I don't think it's any different than when I was in the chair, but that can be part of the, the challenge, is they're losing an hour plus a day to go to programs, whereas possibly your surrounding districts, whether it be Tioga, New York Valley, some of the others in the area, could bring students here. And that can be a real issue for students that are traveling, and it's, really happens in every single school district, and so BOCSIS has approached you on that piece, and obviously the lease is kind of already in place. So there's three different scenarios, and you can see the numbers are a lot bigger, but the outcome is financially a, a lot, a lot better as well. So the first one you'll see is, is a two, a twenty-seven million dollar project, a million dollars worth of work that would go into the maintenance building, which is unaided. The intent is that BOCSIS would provide that one million dollars to you, it may be reimbursement, there, I would say the details of that have not been really ironed out, but these financial scenarios really are not contingent on their million dollars, so you're, you're at no risk to say, well, we're going to move forward in May, and if they don't give us a million dollars, we're out. No, it would just simply be that, that construction cost in that maintenance area would not be locally funded, you'd make that decision whether or not you wanted to do it. What we're really doing here, to, to not confuse anyone, is we're taking the revenue off from that lease, and we're, and you have limited uses to what you can use revenue on a lease on. One of those uses is debt, and so one of those uses is to go towards a capital project, and to offset any local share that you have, and then some. So that's what you're really going to be looking at, go ahead, go ahead. Should be able to read that maybe, I'll open someone to you. I'll show you the most important column, the far right-hand side, anytime there's brackets around it, we get excited as finance people. So in this scenario, the district is contributing two million dollars of local money from your capital reserve, which is very consistent with the scenarios from the last meeting. You might remember, those scenarios had one point nine, we rounded up to two million, so it's the same, same exact commitment from the district standpoint as far as local money. And then from that point, there's also a million dollars of money coming from revenue, coming from BOCSIS. Now intentionally, it's just highlighted as its own standalone work there, if that makes sense. So it's really showing us three million dollars, but you could pull that million dollars out if it didn't come through, and it wouldn't make any difference to your number, you would just take a million dollars off the top. So the referendum would be twenty-six, seven, not twenty-seven, seven, that's basically what it would look like. So in that scenario, using the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in lease, we're also showing that as a full fifteen-year lease, chances are, as that building, or even additional spaces within your district get identified as BOCSIS, the three sixty will only go up, it won't go down. So you have staff savings on that side, you also have obviously the lease generated revenue. So your local share on this size of a project is three fifty-seven a year, and you're receiving three sixty in revenue back from that. So that's what makes this one neutral, so it's about twenty, just under twenty-eight million, again, if a million dollars comes through, I don't ever count on money until it's there, so I'm just being realistic. If the million doesn't come through, then you have a, you have a twenty-six million dollar, it doesn't stop when you go to voters for, it goes, it becomes important to go to spend, and so we would manage that as well. So that's your first scenario, and that number pretty much covers that list that you saw, it does make it a little bit tight, a little bit tighter. But this is another scenario which, which increases to twenty-nine, just under twenty-nine point seven million, it's using an additional five hundred thousand in reserves, which takes you to two point five. Still that million dollars is, is built into the scenario, still using the three sixty as a lease, so that additional five hundred thousand is actually generating two, two more million dollars worth of revenue. So you can see this again, really the numbers look exactly the same at that standpoint. So you're generating the three sixty in revenue, your local share is three fifty-eight, and again, you're neutral on that. And then the third scenario, Marcy, is putting three million dollars in, and that jumps that all the way up to thirty-two million. That uses the lease of, again, three hundred and sixty thousand, one million of it, again, goes, everything is exactly the same where else, and then that generates, looks just like, literally looks just like the one we just saw, so all we did was replace the additional million dollars, or half a million dollars into the finances. So it really comes down to a preference as far as local impacts, none of these scenarios. So it really comes down to a preference as far as local impacts, none of these scenarios. And at this point, just in four weeks, I wouldn't be, I would not recommend you to have any local impact on any capital project, especially with a partnership of Bosse's like this. That's a good situation to be in. The million dollars can certainly go to the maintenance building to finalize classroom spaces in there. Certainly whatever CTE programs they're looking to, and they've got, you'll have a lot of input on that, Dr. Green, well, Farrell, your staff, as far as what programs get moved here. I don't think they're looking for an entire center, like a replication of their CTE center. But you have programs that are highly attended, that would probably be the low line crew. Is what your students are the most interested in in the Wigo, since you have a building. That's basically where you go, that's where you start. So your ag program, which is continuing to grow, your trades programs, which are getting lots of attention, continue to. It's, those are the types of programs that will go first. And then some of the other ones, some of the trades, whether it be cosmetology or something, they'll approach that as they, because they're full at Bosse's with that, whether or not they feel that's the best use or not. You'll have good local control over that. The million dollars, I'm optimistic, they wouldn't have set it if they didn't have a way to do it. The last part to this is we're also baking on that not being aided. And I do think there's legitimate, it is worth some legitimate conversations with Dr. Green and Wood State Ed, because there's a huge push right now in Albany and they throw money at these types of things to expand these trade programs. And geographically, Brum County, Tioga County, the surrounding counties all have this challenge with students on buses. Now our, our Valentine storm is going to skip us, it looks like this year, or not, God would. But we all know that what happens when that happens and there's a half day or a two-hour delay, those students lose their programs first, because it doesn't make any sense to travel. So having them locally, I've always been a big fan of, they've had great success as you have, I'm here in Wigo, having your programs locally. I think your numbers will grow, they won't shrink, because they can go right across the parking lot to a program. But, but as far as the aiding side of it, I think there's a legitimate case to make with State Ed. But in the case of staying on time and looking at going to voters, you can't promise any of that. So what you're looking at is the absolute worst-case scenario. Whereas the million dollars, if it doesn't come in, just take a million dollars off these. If the million dollars comes in, that's what you're looking at. If they aid it, that number, that's only going to help you on your, it'll make your last column, whatever. Let's say they aid half of that building, you would break $500,000 at 88.5% over the 15 years is how you would do that. And that's, that's what that would look like. So it leaves you some room for future projects, it leaves you some room for some maintenance items, because you will have the maintenance side of it. That becomes part of your lease, things like that. But the good part is the building will be renovated. So obviously you're not going to have a whole lot of costs associated with that. So questions? And I went through that really fast, but that's kind of about as 180 as you could be from a month ago, whatever it was, three weeks ago.
What's the balance of the capital reserve?
So, so the first part, the capital reserve balance, what do we see left of?
It will be, it's projected at 2 million, 1.9 in June, 2 million is not a problem by June at this point.
So we're talking about possibly three?
So that you're projecting out when the project actually starts. So at this point, we're looking at 2026.
Construction you have.
Borrowing money in construction. You're looking at at least two years from now to come up with the next million.
Yeah, on the cash flow side. Yeah, on that cash flow side, all three of these scenarios, I didn't really get into that too much. You'd be using your local share for at least that first. So let's say May, you go to voters in May, it passes, any one of these scenarios, that local share is going to carry you all the way through 25. And the first time you would go to bands and borrow against that would be July 1 of '26, more likely.
The other thing is this is highly likely to be a phased project. It's not likely to borrow all 27, 29 million dollars at once. You do it in phases, and that's always a good idea just for standard aid purposes, so you roll aid faster. And that's typically how we've done it in the past with RAR.
Yeah, this, these scenarios that Christine ran are based on bands, three different sets of bands going out. And so then your revenue coming back on the lease and the revenue coming back on building aid. So we want to time this where the first phase goes. Let's just break, make it even 10, 10, and 10. That first 10 million dollars, regardless of where it's done at, it doesn't make any difference. We close that 10 million dollars before you go to bands on the next one, so you can drive the aid back to pay that note. And that's, that actually makes this situation better. So the numbers only get better. But being on the conservative side, not to, I'll never publish a document that I'm not 90% sure you can, you can do. Actually, in your last project, you went to voters on a neutral project, two projects ago, sorry, the last 20-plus million dollar one. You actually worked to the plus side of about 200,000 on the aid side, because we closed out a phase quickly, the middle school office, along with some other work, we went ahead and closed that to drive the aid before the full bands kicked in on the next phase. So this is also based on interest rates staying upwards of 5 and 6%. Government bonds right now are in that neighborhood of 5 to 6%. I'd like to think that that's, the economy's not going to handle that much longer. Government bonds are already starting to trickle down into the fours. So not to get into the, the whole market side of this, but government bonds being backed by the governments tend to fall first before our mortgage rates and stuff like that fall. They kind of move like gas prices at that point, a little slower.
Thank you.
The only thing that's a little bit, I don't know how risky we're talking about this. By 2026, we need to have another million dollars added to the, to the capital reserve.
That's, that's correct, if you go to the, the second and third scenario, correct. First one is, is more guaranteed in terms of the projections we have right now for this year.
If you go back one more, Marcin, to the second scenario. So this second scenario right here is an additional 500,000. So you have 2 million pretty much ready to go right now. So you need additional 500,000. And you would, you would deposit that, not this budget year, not '24, '25 budget year, you would deposit that '25, '26. What that would really mean is we couldn't spend more than 2, 2 million in that process. But with the way budgets are looking and the way that, until we get some movement in the governor's office, until the governor's office and legislature meet somewhere in the middle, it's awfully hard to commit additional funds. In most places I'm talking to, we're kind of going with what we know right now.
Well, and I think back over the past years where, you know, we've had a change of administration, you know, in Washington. And the picture for, you know, aid to instructional, you know, was day and night, it flipped.
Yeah, and that, and that kind of builds some of that into this scenario too. If you, if you go, go back one more, right to the first one. So the first one, this one right here, yeah. So this one right here worked off from what you kind of already have committed. So you're neutral on it. You're actually taking yourself a little bit to the better. You already have the 2 million, you're within your reserves, and I think might have been what you were asking there, it's wrong about that part. Like it's already what's in the reserve, it's kind of already ready to go. You're not looking to try to budget an additional half a million. That's generating 27.3 million. And keep it in mind, as, as Mike Farrell just said, you're, you're not billing that a year. So you're not going to see this closed out to almost 28. So a conservative, they're not telling you what to do, but on the conservative side of it, you could say, well, we have the 2 million, we go out for the 27. Now some things start changing in Washington, now some things start changing even within the state. And you have additional funds, nothing stops you two years from now from going back out for 10 million or 9 million or something like that, and using those additional funds. Not to mention whether or not you need that $500,000 for other, I mean, everyone's facing a weird bunch of time. Yeah, I think most of the government's budget's not going to go too far. But nonetheless, it's middle of February and April 1 is around the corner. And they broke the bubble last year by not having an on-time budget. So usually when that happens, it's kind of like a death sale in Washington. We did, we did really well for several years having on-time budgets, but I, I'm not super optimistic right now.
I remember the morning of August.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And so that's where, you know, adding additional monies, the money, the 2 million dollars is already tied up. It's not money you could actually pull back into your general fund anyway, because it's earmarked for your capital. But the 27 is a huge, huge start. My point is, is that all those projects I kind of listed there in the couple of slides, they're not happening a year type of thing. They, you know, I, I'm not a fan, and I know I've shared with you before, of the single submissions of 27, 28 million. I think what it does to your aid ratios, it only hurts you. I know who it benefits, and I don't blame them, it's a good business decision. But when you send them in, you, you reset, your aids are calculated from the day of commissioner approval. So if you take a year in any school district right now to approve it, basically to draw, to communicate, to program, to present, to do all of that, what it takes on a 27 million dollar project. And then you submit that to SED, you still have three build years that you're going to, it's going to take you three years to build that. 10 million a year is right about where your limits are in building right now. Hopefully that changes with the labor force, but with Micron not that far away. The stadium is actually, the stadium in Buffalo is drawing people out of our area right now as far as labor. So we usually say 10 million dollars a year is safe. But every five years is when your aid resets, and it resets from commissioner approval. That was changed five years ago. It used to be from the day you submit, it's now on commissioner approval. So you can see it's smarter, so you submit smaller projects, get them, get them through quicker, get them into construction, close them, drive aid, and then you reset quicker. It's, because if not, you're, you're waiting, you're waiting five years to do things. And that's a little bit more challenging.
So to that point, I think we discussed last time, if you break out what's crucial.
Yeah.
Are you saying that everything in phase?
So what you're seeing on that part was, yeah, if you go back to the, all the way back, to these part. So the auditorium, there's nothing wrong with the auditorium, it functions right now, but it doesn't match the rest of the building. So the AES list is not necessarily a crucial, like the building couldn't function type of thing, but to match what you have in other places and to, to update it. What is crucial over there, I would say, is that additional infrastructure. The playgrounds, if you wait another five years, they're not going to get better. The kitchen and the cafeteria would be that. The auditorium could wait, but what I would say is from a construction standpoint, if you're addressing the kitchen and you're addressing the cafeteria, your economy of scale here would make sense.
I think the logic has to play into what to do, if you're cutting the roof and everything. But I do, to your point, also of smaller projects, like I just would like to know what is essential and crucial.
Yeah, so, so this list on both slides are pretty much the areas of the highest essential that were also marked as critical on your BCS, on your building conditions, sorry. Yeah, go one more. Over here, the roof mechanical, the classroom renovation just makes sense because you're tearing units off of the roof off, which means you have to tear ceilings out, so it just makes sense to do that. The plumbing, on a critical side, you don't have a million dollars in critical plumbing issues, you probably have a half. The pool building, I, I get concerned about it if you're waiting another 10 years. That's where I get concerned, where I think you will start to see leaks in the building, things like that. At least it's a pool, I guess, but what it does is you're putting new bleachers in there, you're putting new things in there, and now if the building itself starts to struggle. And then some of the others, like the career center, things like that, those are program issues of desires, those are not. The concession stand is not. The parking lots, you're probably in about a five-year window. Another five years, you'll, you'll, you'll start to really see the potholes. And right now, the milling pavings are usually good for three to five years.
Well, I think the pool building is like 22 years.
Yeah, 22, yeah. And it's a metal building, metal construction, so typically lifespans on that, even your auditors, how you depreciate would be looking at 25 on that. It's usually 50 for any other bricks and mortar and 25 on a metal building. You're, you're starting to, we're working inside out on that, because you have some systems inside of the pool right now that are concerning, like waiting another two to three years for, that's why it made the last project. The filtration is one, some of your mechanical is another one. You have some tile that, you don't want to get in there and start patching tile, you start paying twice for it, it doesn't make any sense at that point. Your diving boards, we're not, we don't have any noticeable cracks, we have not found any. If we did, then your insurance company would want those shut down immediately. They're expensive, diving boards are very expensive. So they're not showing the cracks yet. If I can tell from experience with those, maybe three years, you'll, you'll start to see them. And the amount of use, your pool is obviously one of the most used pools around. Auditorium light and sound, I think that's programmed too. Although the rigging is in pretty rough shape. That's probably a little more critical. But there isn't anything, like to the point like, well, the AES before, we actually have sewer lines that were not functioning, things like that. Nothing's at that point on any of these buildings. They're just starting to show their age, and so the time, we try to do a stay ahead of it before they get to that point. It's so expensive to repair, emergency repair things. Like we're limping along some, some units right now over here. So more questions? Anything else? You're good? All right?
All right. From the standpoint of those scenarios, I think probably landing in that 27.7 range where we're comfortable with the, with the 2 million. And then Bosse's revenue obviously being a part of that as well. So is that comfortable for the board as far as if we can move forward with that? Is there more you'd like to see?
I'm comfortable with that one.
The first?
The second.
The first, the first one is 2 million, the second one is two and a half million.
Which one got us to 27?
Uh, first one, first, first one gets you to 27, almost 28. And that covers everything that I showed you there and then some other items that we've kind of lumped together.
I, I would like to see a list of priorities and the cost of priorities. I mean, the, the second one feels good to me, but it feels like we're figuring out how much money to spend as opposed to prioritize.
Yeah, the, and, and you're right, that, I mean, process-wise, the money drives everything. So we usually start with what capacities are, so we don't go down a rabbit hole and go through that. We, we do have those documents as far as off from the building condition survey, you can, they're budget numbers. Because what, what we don't have when you're putting numbers together like this is you don't have architectural type of rendering, things like that. So you can put budget numbers together.
I think like what you did there, generally here are those things, here's how much they cost, priority one, two, three, all the way down.
Yeah, that document actually can provide, yeah, certainly with that. And I think that's, that will tell you that a document like that will give you between the 27 and the 29 scenario, whether or not, know if you're really losing that much on either one of those scenarios. The 32 we left in there because it showed, we're trying to show a high end of a capacity, what would that look like? But additional million dollars is additional to aid dollars. I mean, I, whether or not, you're, you're past just priorities at that point. You're into a whole lot of wants, you know, type of thing. You can spend it, I mean, definitely, I mean, there's, there's probably 50 million that can be spent. But all three of these scenarios also fit with your capacities. So you're building, building 80 unit capacity, this is one building, you know, you've got two schools in it. Your high end of construction index is 39 million and your, and your incidental costs are well over 8 million. Those are actually current numbers. So you have capacity, you have some resets that are coming quicker. So you have capacity to do any one of these scenarios. I'm always careful not to present something that you can't actually do and drive aid. So those are there. But we can certainly put that together, that's not a, that's what we draw these from anyway. But you're right, we do put the money ahead of it, because too many times we'll get a list, whether it be from boards or from, from facilities committees, and then we start working the finances and we're at about a third of that. And so then it's, how do you pick what, you know, what's what? So, yeah, we can definitely do that though.
I agree, I agree with Mike, but I, actually, I thought that was what you'd already done, so.
That, that list you have is, is all critical except for the two or three I mentioned on this.
So scenario one is all critical?
It would be all critical, you still have probably a million and a half dollars in there, items that were talked about, like career centers, different things like that.
But like I said, I agree with Mike, that we should be looking at the most critical ones first, especially if we can't fund it, any more than the 2 million dollars.
Right. So I think, just to be clear with that, the spreadsheet that I use is all the items which are more detailed. So it's going to be a little bit lengthy here in the document, but it's all of the different, we'll just call them tasks or, or project areas. Then it has three columns, which is priority one, two, and three. One being your highest critical items, those come off the BCS or anything else that we've picked up since your last BCS. Priority two are kind of in those areas where it's a really good idea. And then priority three are usually program driven, which, which are important. I mean, they're important, but it comes down to timing wise on that. So, yeah, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Francisco's up, he's going to give us an update on the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank the board for stepping over to the middle school today and seeing some of the great things we have going on. This is the second year that I've been over there and that we've had you guys come over and see some of the wonderful student opportunities that we have going on there. I want to thank the students that participated tonight and also their parents and the teachers. So we'll get started. Our focus, again, we want to continue improving on all of our district initiatives. All means all, continue the process, everyone involved. Our PLCs, we meet weekly, we meet daily. Our grade level meetings are meeting twice a week. Looking at students, looking at different ways to, to help our students. We are currently in year three of standards-based grading and implementing that. As I said before, the students, a little bit different, students are participating in the whole learning process. With this process, we're looking at a three to five-year implementation. Um, and again, we're on year three, so we're almost there. Um, we're doing a lot of great things, um, not only at the middle school, but also behind the scenes to, um, to enhance and to help students in this whole process. I wanted to talk a little bit about our quarterly assessments and our CFAs. Um, when we talk about our quarterly assessments and our CFAs, um, our teachers, our students are constantly looking to see and to get what the pulse of student learning is in their classroom. Um, we have made revisions to the quarterly assessments, uh, throughout the years. Uh, and that can also relate down to our blueprints and the revisions that we made, um, to them. One of the things that we talk about is our blueprints are a living document. The history teacher and me comes out and talks about the constitution and how it's a living document, that's what we want our blueprints to be also. Basically, those documents are used on a daily basis to guide the students and to guide the instruction in the learning process. Um, along with that, our data analysis, um, looking at how students are doing, um, interpreting the data, what did they get in terms of the learning for this unit, this lesson? And if they didn't get, um, certain things, what can we do to get them to learn the material and to kind of master that whole process? One of the things Mr. Daley and I have been working on over the last year or so is our goal time. Um, that is the period at the end of the day, thirty minutes, um, where students and teachers are given an opportunity, um, to get some additional levels of support. Um, rather than, um, allowing students or having students, um, not do well, we are intervening in the learning process. Specifically, what areas are they struggling in and how can we provide direct support to those students so that learning, um, takes place? Um, it's designed to support what goes on on a daily basis. One of the things we continually talk about with our goal time is give those students some support so that we don't directly move right towards classification. If a student is struggling with the learning process, what support can we give to them? What tiers of interventions can we implement to get them to learn the material? Like the middle, or pardon me, like the elementary school, we are also, um, implementing, uh, the NWA, the benchmark testing. Um, we actually have our second series of tests at the end of this year, or pardon me, at the end of this month. Um, where we will, um, take a look to see how the students are and to kind of gauge where they are in terms of their skills for the year. Uh, Mr. Daley and I, um, will be setting up a schedule, or we have a schedule, we just have to share it out, uh, with our faculty and staff and students to implement this testing. And that is, uh, like I said, gonna be done at the end of February. Um, we are in our second year of cross-curricular instruction with ELA and social studies. We basically have a double period for our ELA and social studies students, um, where they are getting both, uh, English and also social studies curriculum, um, in a two-period, uh, block. Um, this is, in our opinion, doing really well. Um, Mr. Schofield and I had an opportunity, um, to attend a principal's meeting, um, in November, where we started to look and break down state assessments. And what we're finding is that, um, the state assessments are using, um, a lot of social studies and science, um, documents and excerpts as part of the state testing. So with our ELA and social studies cross-curricular, um, classes, we are going and diving deep into, um, to the instruction. Um, we are, and we still want to increase our participation in after-school clubs and also programs. You saw a few of them tonight, um, actually four different groups, from robotics to our newspaper club, um, to our band, uh, and also our FFA program. Um, we would like to continue increasing those opportunities for our students here in the district. Our goals, um, this has kind of been my mantra for years, um, eliminate the mindset of students can't. We want them to believe that they have the opportunity and they should believe in themselves. Uh, our teachers are providing them with great instruction and also we want them to understand that they can do anything that they put their minds to. As I said, we are changing a code, focus on the learning, I can, I will persevere. And then, of course, our state tests, we always want to improve on where we are. Continue improvement on our state assessments, I'm gonna show you some, uh, some data that we have, uh, over the last couple of years, um, for the ELA, uh, the math, and also the science exams. Where we're gonna show you some, some growth in our proficiency, um, with that. We also are offering advanced courses in living environment and algebra, and we currently have about a third of our kids taking, um, those regions-level classes in eighth grade. I'll also show you some data for that. As we spoke last year, we we are, um, continually working on what is best for students. Our decisions are based upon that. Last year, we implemented, um, an SST team, basically a student support team, to help students with social and emotional issues that we're starting to face, uh, and they're starting to face here, um, in our community. This team meets on a weekly basis to kind of look at students, hear what's going on in their lives, and then, um, assign, I hate to use the word assign, but give them a support so that that support person can check in and help them as they navigate through everything that they're going through. Um, as I said, enrichment opportunities for kids, we are continuing to look into offer more and continue working on implementation of our standards-based grading system. When they talk about our goals, can you put the next one? Well, there's two in there that shouldn't be, and I'm not sure why they are, but that's okay. Um, each year, we are looking to, um, to, pardon me, to, uh, to improve, or pardon me, get in the top five, uh, in ELA and math. Um, the second one that I wanted to focus on, and I apologize that we have a couple in there that aren't supposed to be, is to decrease the number of ones and twos by twenty percent. Um, and then the third one that we talk about is to reduce our chronic absenteeism rate by two percent. Um, one of the things that we look at every single year is how and what can we do to get us into the top five in ELA and math scores, uh, in the region? Um, from having teachers go to professional development, having teachers do enrichment opportunities through the summer, anything that we can improve instruction, um, in the classroom. Can I skip over the next one? I apologize, this is not the right, you can go, there should be one more. Nope. Uh, somehow, my data did not come through here, but I can give you some information, um, along the lines. Um, I apologize. For the last two years, uh, we wanted to give you some data, uh, for ELA and also for our math scores. What we're starting to see is some growth in proficiency, the proficiency rate would be our students scoring threes and fours, uh, on state assessments. Um, what we saw in ELA primarily over the last two years, um, was a growth, um, in seventh grade, pardon, sixth grade. We did see a decrease, uh, in this last year from a fifty-four percent in proficiency down to forty-one percent. But that was the same across the state, the state saw a decrease there also. Uh, for seventh grade, we saw, um, an increase in proficiency from forty-four percent to forty-six percent. Eighth grade, thirty-eight to forty percent. In mathematics, um, an increase in sixth grade from twenty-nine percent in twenty-two to fifty percent in twenty-three. Seventh grade, twenty-nine percent in twenty-two and forty-seven increase in twenty-three. Eighth grade, eighteen percent in twenty-two and a forty-four percent increase in twenty-three. The science exam is new this year, um, so we're gonna see a change in our science state assessment. From twenty-two to twenty-three, OA scored proficiency in twenty-two of seventy-seven percent, and then a slight decrease in twenty-three to sixty-four percent. The last thing I really wanted to point or to point out and show, uh, the board, is our state testing data specifically for regions exams. Um, in living environment, we had one hundred percent of our kids pass the regions exam this past year. Of that, yeah, excuse me here for a second, sixty-five percent of them scored mastery level, which is eighty-five or higher. In Algebra I, one hundred percent of our kids passed the regions exam with forty-eight percent scoring eighty-five or higher. So when we look at the total number of students taking our regions exam in eighth grade, um, our advanced levels students, we had, uh, for living environment, about fifty-seven kids take the regions exam. Um, and then in Algebra, Algebra I, about fifty students take that exam. So we're seeing some good growth and some good scores, uh, and what we want to see, of course, is more kids try that exam, which gives them more opportunity down the road, um, in high school, uh, to take different courses and electives into their junior and senior, pardon, senior year. So, uh, I apologize for the data not being there, I'm not sure what happened. It's old data.
Want to say to Isipedia?
Could be, I'm not sure. So, do you have any questions for me? Again, I apologize for that data.
Well, stop getting the information written down for me, so can you send that to us or what?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Ken.
One of, just quickly note, one of the things that we really tried to focus on throughout the district this year is attendance of our students. Uh, we started working with Everyday Labs, um, which does an analysis of our student attendance and gives us interventions, tier-one interventions for us to try to use with students. There's more communication that's happening with parents on what chronic absenteeism actually looks like, um, where some might think that their children are not chronically absent, but they end up being chronically absent. Um, and that obviously, over time, becomes, you know, becomes an issue. So something we've had a big initiative with and I know that the principals are, have been digging into that data and trying to keep improving those attendance numbers.
Section ten.
We can put through all the, um, they listed them as one to keep them separate, they can go as one.
Okay.
Or.
Oh, yeah. Okay. These are all second grade, right?
And I heard nothing through many of us, so all good.
So I would ask for a motion for either ten point one through ten point four.
So who?
Linda. Mike.
Gee.
Aye.
Willa.
Aye.
Mike Phelps.
Aye.
Jason Lee.
Aye.
Mike Paul.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Joe Bailey.
As promised, uh, I am ten point five, and the board member nomination, uh, for, uh, the opening is, I think, because it's probably, it's
John Crosby.
John Crosby is going off after many years.
And Dave Holly is the other one.
Dave Holly is staying, uh, running again. So, um, they're looking for a nomination for John Crosby's position, and we have to nominate also?
Yeah, two.
And so, okay, nominate two. So David Holly's from Dinkton, is that her call? And, sorry, look for a nomination for, oh, I'll, I'll need.
I'd like a nomination.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to nominate undergrounds.
I'd like to nominate Dave Holly.
Just a second.
Second.
Second. So we got that, Mark?
All the bear?
Nope, no, it's all in. Excuse me, Mark.
Gee.
Aye.
Willa. I could be wrong. Jason Lee.
Aye.
Mike Phelps.
Aye.
Jessica. Anne. Mike Paul.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Okay. I have ten point six, this is for the Insights final survey contract, in motion.
So who?
Linda.
Second.
Right.
Uh, we can discuss it now, right? So is this, we talked earlier about, uh, is this, so tell me what's in the contract. I mean, I read what's in the contract, but are we surveying just our current staff? I had asked earlier about reaching out to the staff who've left the district in the past three years to get the perspective as well. Um, is that included as well?
I don't think so.
Last time we talked about this, I think, I don't know if we were in the auditorium.
Yeah.
We were gonna look at questions, and that never happened.
I think Jennifer talked to us about what she was able to do with the, the, the contract that we had talked to her about. Um, we had not talked about former staff.
I'm not sure how you get former staff.
Yeah, that's a, that would be something that we would have to talk, probably talk more to her about, but at this point in time, we did not get and direct the answer.
So we can look into that, though.
Sure.
Yes, and right now we're talking about.
This is what we talked about when she presented to us as a board, uh, that whole overview, and then the contract had the specific indicators of it. For the student staff, community members, parents.
I think there was also talk of, we were interested in, some people were interested in other options as well. I know that this, this company's fine, they seem well, but I, it went from, oh, there's options out there to this is what we're going with. So I think we were, I think there was interest in just what else is out there.
The reason, the reason we had talked about this one was because this is a service that we already have through BOSI, so this is not gonna cost the district money at all because it's through BOSI's. Because we already have K-12 Insights, correct?
It's gonna, it'll cost, it'll cost some, but you're gonna receive.
Percent, yeah, it's sizable. Versus, you know, spending thirty to fifty thousand to go out and have an outside contractor and do the same thing for us. But I think this is a start for us to get some feedback for the board, um, everything that we want answered, because we had some concerns.
Yeah, I agree. And then there was some question as to whether or not people that didn't feel comfortable doing it electronically could do it paper and pen.
Yes.
Is that still a big good option?
It's still, yes. We wanna make this as accessible and as easy for our folks, that the communities will constantly know. If you have any other questions, we can get them right to Jennifer, so anything else, let us know.
I think that's what they're saying is that those questions weren't answered. I got the questions too.
I'm sorry, Joe, can you speak up?
I think the last time that we did meet over in elementary school, I believe, I think those questions were asked and how to be told to get them to her to answer them.
No, if you have additional questions, we had those questions answered because she was online talking to us.
Right, right. Mike asked the initial question on how people would then was like who have left the district.
I thought we had that answered while she was online.
Which was what? Both of our.
That we could not get former employees, that we're gonna have to look into some other avenue to ask questions associated with that. Some, some other way. Did I not hear him? I, I did not hear Jennifer answer that question outside of that. They couldn't do that, they haven't done that in the past.
Right.
So we can explore other options of reaching out to former employees.
What we were trying to do was to get the survey, the survey set up as soon as we possibly can. And that's what they worked on since our meeting in December. And so they have it set up, they have the contract for us approved and forward with and hope to have it ready to go up to our folks as soon as possible.
Sounds good.
Okay. And I apologize, I was, that was a meeting that I was held for, I wasn't there, so I'm just, I didn't have to answer that. Okay, finally.
Gee?
I'm sorry.
Willis?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Mike Phelps?
Aye.
Jessica? Anne? Mike Pauls?
Aye.
Joe?
This might be an order, but can I just ask a clarifying question about what we're going on? Is this the file survey that we're on yet?
The contract.
This is the contract.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Item ten point seven, in motion.
Someone?
Jason.
Second.
Jessica.
Gee?
Aye.
Oh, I.
That's not, that's, I have an issue, so.
There's something on the board.
There's something, things aren't opening on my neighbor.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, I thought it was just me.
No. So which one are we at?
We are doing, um, ten forty-seven.
Which is, which was what?
Is the, um, hold on.
The book, so should it be discussion?
There can be.
I'll go first. I wrote some, cause we, yeah, I wrote some things down. So I apologize if I am going to read a little bit. "I understand the profound seriousness of removing books from public school libraries. I think I can speak for the board regarding that. It is, it's a big deal. And it's my understanding, once a book is in a library, it is very difficult to remove and cannot be removed due to its content. However, a book may be removed if it's deemed pervasively vulgar using community standards. I appreciate the work of the committee, the opinions expressed during the review and the recommendation. I am somewhat surprised the decision was unanimous, knowing how controversial the book is. I think our Board of Education is unique in that the majority of us are also career educators, and we bring that perspective to this decision as well. We're making a decision on whether this particular book is appropriate to be in our schools with school-aged children. Dr. Green has assured us, there are several books currently in our library with the same content for students to access. I've read the book. I've also read many opinions both for and against this book being in public schools and have solicited the opinions of many educators and taxpayers. I personally find the book to be pervasively vulgar due to the graphic images of masturbation and ill sex, regardless of the genders portrayed in the images. I believe the majority in our community hold the same view. And I'm gonna be voting to remove the book from the library. Thank you."
You know?
Sure, I'll speak. I, I have a master's degree in counseling at counsel individuals to issues of sexual identity, orientation, transgender, middle school, high school, college, and adult. I don't want people to kind of get into a situation where we're categorizing people based on how they vote on this book. So I hope at least there's some credibility to that statement that you understand that this isn't anything about homophobia and transphobia. I think the pictures in the book are gratuitous. And I believe that, talking about community standard, I know standards change with the time. But I know that as a former Oego student, if I had that book, and there's some teachers in this room, if I had that book and I was showing it around in class when I was here, that would be an issue. I think that these times have changed, obviously. But the pictures that are in there are unnecessary and gratuitous. And I, I think that even currently, that book is available to eleven-year-olds. Eleven-year-olds can't go on this internet. So, no, isn't it a middle school?
I don't believe that.
Is that a middle?
I think only high school kids can.
Is that, is that new or no? Has it always been that way?
Yeah, I believe so. No, like.
Can middle school students?
The problem is now because our high school, middle school are one building, one room.
That doesn't, that doesn't matter at all.
No, I do have sixth graders that are reading. My, if I may, I wasn't supposed to speak, my personal opinion is, just because a kid can read books doesn't mean he should, but I don't believe we should ban books. This is an opportunity for the parents to sit and talk to their kids. I do find the book personally, to me, would not be something I would want my child to read. But I think we also do not realize as a community how many of our students in middle school, high school right now are going through challenges of who they think they are or who they think they want to be. And I think that when we shut down avenues for them to explore what they believe they are or wanna be, like, I don't understand at all, I think that we don't give them an opportunity to find a safe place to talk about it where they may or may not change their mind as they get down the road. I mean, we all know middle schools, middle school because you're stuck in the middle, you don't know where you belong. And I think some of our kids are making choices because it's cool, or it's out there, or it's in social media, and I don't think they truly know who they are. So I think if we don't give them that safe place where they can explore something and talk to an adult about it, that we're kind of doing them a disservice.
It, it doesn't prevent them from talking to them about it in that book here. But I'm just gonna go back to a point that, is it clear now that eleven-year-olds can sign it up?
I think both, my understanding was it was only high school students that were able to sign the book.
The way, the way, on the, on the technology side of that program, the way that I set it up at SB and it's, the way BOSI sets it up is there's three levels. There's elementary, there's middle, and there's high school. And those books are, are assigned a grade level, and if they are above a grade level, they can't sign them up.
Okay, regardless, I think there's some question whether or not eleven-year-olds can sign it out here because it's a joint library. So I'm, I'm just gonna say, I think the pictures, if you haven't seen the pictures, I think they're gratuitous. They're unnecessary for the message, and that's why I'm gonna vote to not have that book.
I guess I'll go next. I did read the book. I do have children in the school, both, I guess not elementary anymore, middle through high school. Couple of notes, one, you know, reading the book, were there parts that made me personally uncomfortable? Yes, there, there certainly was. But I also believe it's, it's not about me, and it's not my decision to decide what's appropriate and uncomfortable for, for you or for your child or for, or for your student. This, if they're interested in the book, there's worse places for them to get that information that I also find to be, not just worse, but sounds dramatic, but dangerous if they don't have, you know, a library to go to. And it's interesting, in the book, the author makes reference to, to the library, and when they discovered, you know, they, they didn't feel normal, they, they had questions, and when they discovered the library, they discovered their books, it was a safe place for them to go. Yes, to your point, when I was in school, if I brought this book and was showing my friends, sure, there'd be a problem. I, you know, a call would be home, but that's not the world today. It's, it's different, and we have to accept that. I also appreciate, in this specific book, there is scientific mention about what is going through and what happens and why, you know, they're feeling, why they're feeling the way they do, and they explain that. So I think that's important to know, too. It's a piece, it's, there's a place of information there. Sorry, I made cliff notes, I didn't write out full sentences, so it's, um. I, as far as the age appropriateness, I know I've seen and I heard, you know, it's eighteen and older, but that's just one, that's just one place you can get the book. That's, that's Amazon. Amazon is not a literary business. There's other places that it's, you know, fourteen or fifteen. So, you know, there are, I, I did choose to have the libraries combined. I, I personally don't agree with that. I think they should still be separated. This opens the door for, you know, sixth graders and, and high schoolers to, to meet, but that wasn't my choice. Look, you know, there is a library, it's my understanding that you can't just go into the library and take a book out. You do have to see the librarian, and they have to check it out. And I would hope that, you know, being in the schools and seeing the schools, and I, some of my kids are readers, those librarians know their student, they know the students. They know, like, you know what, this book isn't for you, let's take a look over here, you know, they, they, they know what these kids need. See. I hope I can read mine. Can't read all of my writing, but I just, I don't think it's our decision. I think that this opens up, hopefully, an opportunity, creates an opportunity for open discussion and more acceptance in our, our communities and within our students. And like I said, I think there's worse places for kids to go to find the information than, than in a library. I will be voting to keep the book. I also don't, I also, sorry, I just said what I was gonna say, but I do not like the idea of setting a precedence to start banning books. And there was certainly school, books in school that I had to read that my parents did not agree with. There's books that I've seen that my kids have read in school as part of the curriculum. This is not curriculum. This is, this is a place to, to add to your life that I don't agree with, but it's part of the curriculum, is, is what a book is. And I, I don't think it's a safe place to go to start opening the doors for just, you know, a, a group of people don't agree with it, and we ban things. I think we gotta work past that and, you know, find a better solution. Getting involved in our, our kids' lives and open, opening the door for discussion. Okay, now I'm done.
From my perspective, I wanna speak to the, to the board and to the community members and illustrators and teachers that are here in the room. This is not my personal opinion, this is my professional opinion. I've been involved with education since I was a young girl. I love to read. And obviously, most of you know, I have two children that have children of their own. And as I spent many years here at Oego and then elsewhere in other districts, I learned to trust the professionals that I worked with. They were important to me, giving me feedback as a teacher, as an educator, as an administrator. And I believe there's processes that work in the different districts around us. And even though, as a board member, we were entrusted with evaluating this process that we went through, that the committee did as they evaluated the book or the memoir, and then the decision was made by the committee, and then the decision again was made by the superintendent, we had to listen to the appeal by the committee member who was still not happy with the decision. And so I had to read this memoir, which I would not choose to read. I had no interest in reading anything like that. And yet, we know for all these years that I've been around with children and adults that this issue that we read in this memoir has been troubling people for years. And I remember having students talk about, talk to me as a teacher about some of these things that they struggled with when they were fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen years old. And you're always encouraging them to go to their families, to their parents, or to somebody to get help. And so I took on the task of doing memoir, as all of us did. It was very difficult to read, to look at the illustrations. It was painful at times, on my own time, because that's what I'm charged to do as a board member. So even though I'm trying not to be personal about it, this is what I had to do. And then I had to sit back and think about all the different things I experienced as a professional and think about what these people did on the committee. They did the same thing. They evaluated it. They gave their opinion. I come back with the same thoughts that Jessica just shared. I believe that kids should have a choice in the library. We do things in the classroom with books, and we try to find the right science book. We have a process that we have to follow. We don't get to pick the one we want. We have to, you know, send it to the committee to help us. I'm losing my stead, I can't talk, I'm sorry. So the bottom line is, I trust the judgment of the committee, the superintendent. My own experiences as a parent, as a grandparent, it's not my book that I would have decided or memoired it to read, by no means. But I trust the judgment of the committee. I'm gonna vote, I'm not gonna go against what the committee recommended. Because I just can't. I'm not, I'm not for banning books. And I know kids need to be able to choose, and I hope that they can develop relationships where they can talk about things that are, but in a perfect world, maybe, but that's what I wish they would do, more along the lines of what you're saying. So I'm not gonna vote to ban it.
Well, without repeating a lot of things.
I just wanna make one clarification. There are ten other books in the library with the same contents.
Can we just stay focused on this one for now?
No, that's, this is part of the conversation.
That was, that was a question. She did answer that question. And, and that was the data that we got. And I can think of many books over the forty, fifty years that have come to surfaces being issues and discussion. I remember going to, parents being upset about me talking about the unit on reproduction when I was teaching biology. I got a lot of phone calls.
My, my point is, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that I'm not in favor of banning the content. This one has pictures that I don't approve of, and I don't believe the majority of it.
Seven out of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven illustrations are obnoxious, rude, and ugly. But, but I agree with you one hundred percent.
I don't think any of us would disagree. And a lot of what you've already said, I'm not gonna repeat, but, you know, you said times change, Joe. Back when I was a kid, Lord of the Flies was, you know, a controversial book, you know, real. And so that shows you how things change over time. You know, I mean, today, nobody would even give that one a second thought. But it was disturbing. You know, and, and yet, but I tell you, I spent a lot of time, I'm glad I have teenage grandchildren because I listen to them talk and, and their perspective on things. And I think, wow, you know, I'm just not, you know, I'm, I'm not in a position where I can say comfortably that just because it makes me uncomfortable, that it's not, it shouldn't be available to them. So I'm not gonna ban the book.
For, for one point of clarification, how did, how did the decision get made for it to be ordered and put in a library?
It was, yes, the librarian who said the decision.
The librarian. One sole person made that decision? And it was approved, it must have been approved on the library.
The board gets involved with curriculum when we start buying books for curriculum, but until one, we've never been involved with libraries.
One person made that decision, and if that decision was made differently, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Well, that's probably not fair, because that person issued a requisition, that actually goes up through the chain. Yeah, but historically, the, the librarian.
There's no requirement for order library.
No, there's not.
That's what I have had an issue with.
There, my understanding, my, based on talking with the current librarian, as well as those that have retired from the district, is that there are, uh, lists of books and memoirs and all kinds of journals that will come into a library based on whether they get the Alex Award, which this particular book did, it is meant for a particular age group, but there's lists of things, and it's like, it showed up in a particular year, just like something showed up in, in, in the year two thousand, uh, five. I mean, they have, uh, this huge list of things that would be acceptable for high school, middle, and elementary, and so that's where they go, they go to select the American Library Association, they have lists of places that they go, these are the types of things that they want to bring into secondary and elementary-level libraries. That's the information that's been shared with me, from the librarians.
But, and, and to that point, the, the individual who chose this possibility, never even read the book, it's possibility, by which you say, they choose from a list, to Mike's point, I would ask before we vote.
So I, I don't, I don't know, Joe, if she didn't read the book or not.
I'm saying it's possible, right, so, and to Mike's point, I would ask, before we vote, the question, if the question was, should we bring that book into the library, what would your vote be? I, I, I can't help but think there probably are a lot of different votes to say, oh, maybe that's the one we can pass on and get the content from somewhere else.
Well, first of all, I wouldn't wanna be micromanaging my librarians that work in our district, is, is they're the ones that are the professionals, they're the ones that are trained to do the selection for the kids of our district.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm saying, your position is, you said the pictures are disgusting, and that if you had to be making a decision whether to bring the book in, I think you might say, no, probably not, I'm just making a hypothetical. And the, the point is, Mike made a great point, there are probably two, maybe three people who decided to bring the book in, and here we are. And I think that, saying that, it's saying that we're responding because we wanna ban a book, I think that's simplified.
I didn't, I didn't say that. I just said, I'm just saying, I'm just giving my reasons why I'm not gonna vote to ban the book, because I don't believe, I don't believe in banning books.
I think every single one of us was uncomfortable with the book, but Jessica made some excellent points, and she made some excellent points. I don't, I don't feel comfortable banning books. And, and maybe, maybe the process needs, but that's, again, that's not our role as board members, superintendent's role, okay? We can't, we're not, we're not, librarians don't work for us, he does.
I, I understand that, Jean, but we are in a process of taking the vote away.
We are, and, and I think all of us have a chance to say something. And I tried to let every one of you say what you think, and I think, in, in large part, we kind of all agreed, we were uncomfortable with it, but, you know, we're not necessarily gonna vote the same way, it's just, this is the discussion. I don't wanna cut it short, I think everybody had a chance, so, I guess with that.
Jean.
Hi.
Luda.
Hi.
Hi, it's Peter.
Jessica.
Hi.
Michael.
No.
Luke Phelps.
No.
Jason.
Hi.
Joe Pellegrino.
No.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, item ten point eight, this is just that resolution about the, um, social media companies, everybody's getting on this, any motion?
I, or, uh, some moves.
Thanks, man.
Seven.
Jessica.
Jean.
Hi.
Luda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Um.
Mike.
Hi.
Sorry, Mike Phelps.
Hi.
Jason Luke.
Hi.
Joe Pellegrino.
Hi.
I have no idea what's going on, poor dad, so it's really.
That's really messed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, just kicked me out. He picked us all up, because I wouldn't.
I mean, so, uh, we got there, move, but it's still there. Okay, um, we reached, uh, the point for our public comments, I have, I have a maybe, Joe. Whether you're gonna possibly, I don't know, you put two minutes, please.
I'm not gonna read. So am I correct that, tells us to keep the book just banned?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm not gonna read my prepared speech. Part of this, however, talks about the fact that, um, one of the things I took in my ninety graduate hours here for teaching at OFA was a course in gay and lesbian literature, and my perspective, as I looked at gender queer, was from that frame of reference. And I have to say, and I took that course probably back in, like, nineteen ninety-five, and the things in that were much more disturbing than what's in gender queer. So if we look at the whole, like, genre of what is out there, this actually is not that sensational compared to the other things that I did read, so that's the one thing. The other thing I would say, I don't like the images either, but it's not hard graphic, because the point is that Maya, the author, is actually repulsed by sex, so it's not trying to arouse anybody. And I guess the other thing I wanted to say, and I'm, I'm glad that you passed it, I asked a thirty-eight-year-old trans woman who came out nine years ago what the book would have meant to her in high school, and she said she also felt the confusion and the frustration, and she had no words to describe what she was going through. And she said to me that having that book available would have helped her, and I know that her parents worried for years about her committing suicide. And that's really where I'm coming from in terms of that book, because I look at those seven images, and I look at the fact that suicide rate for young people who are, you know, transgender, non-binary, whatever, is extraordinarily high, and we've already had suicides in this district, and I don't wanna see anyone else commit suicide, I want them to know the library's the same place. So that was my perspective, more than the particular illustrations, plus the fact that what they can see on the internet, that's actual real people rather than illustrations, is much worse than what's in that book. So I was coming at it from the point of view of knowing how much students struggle, and how often the teachers don't know. I mean, I think about students who sat in my class, I never thought about their gender or, you know, how to know about anything, and then years later, I mean, part of the thing, one of the things I did in class was I wouldn't let a kid say, that's gay, because it dawned on me that I had students sitting there who had heard that over the years, and it was always a negative thing, and I, I just sort of felt, oh my gosh, what was that child thinking of listening to that in class? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Fire.
Thank you. I think, I have extensive, have had extensive experience with LGBTQ, both in family situation and social situation and educational settings. I don't think this book was as much about, um, the concern that was expressed about the LGBTQ issues as it is the explicit pictures. Kids don't need to know this stuff at the age they're at. When a twelve-year-old wants to have a discussion, which I'm glad they're comfortable enough asking, why are we talking to a twelve-year-old about butt sex? Why do the kids need to see these pictures? I'm not talking about banning books, it comes down to appropriate access to it, and if the school library has some control in place, okay, that's, that's one thing. Thank you very much for your candid explanation, your, um, consideration, and thank you to those of you who are brave enough to stand up and say, no, we don't think this is appropriate. But thank you to all of you for considering.
Thank you very much. Okay. We do have an eighty-dollar executive session, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to move an executive session to discuss employee negotiations and a employee history.
I guess.
Second.
Jason. All in favor?
Hi.
Good night, everyone.